I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, in the name of your son, Jesus, we pause today to give you thanks, to give you honor, praise and glory, for you are worthy. Father, we ask your divine guidance, your wisdom. God, we ask that our hearts and our minds be open as we hear from the public, as we applaud those that have done well and excelled, whatever presentations, God, that may come before us. Help us all to be mindful and keep an open mind and heart, God, that the end result is making sure that we do what is in the best interest of our children, of our stakeholders, our community, of our school district. God, we just pray for your divine guidance. And also, Father, we take this time to pause and thank you for your favor. For as we have been discussing, there are many districts and many of the states that have not even opened because of the conditions of the coronavirus. But, God, you allowed us, and we thank you for our employees that persevered. Some were afraid, didn't know what to expect, but, God, they went because we asked. Thank you for provisions that we were able to provide to help them to feel safe. God, we pray your blessings upon families that have lost loved ones to this dreadful virus. God, now abide in this meeting. Keep us focused, and we'll be careful to give you praise, honor and glory. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Gillyard. Now we'll have presentations. Our first presentation is the recognition of the Spelling Bee winners with Ms. Laura France.
Don't show me to vote on me?
Oh, we will. Well, yes, let's do that. Could I have a motion to allow Ms. Crawford to attend virtually?
So move.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Okay, Ms. Crawford, you're here.
Most of you actually got to be at the Spelling Bee this year. I want to thank again Ms. Pickens, Ms. Crawford and Mr. McGuinness as being our judges this year. It was a lot of fun, and it was very, very stressful. It was 24 rounds, 24 rounds. And the two children that we would like to honor today are our runner-up and our winner. And our runner-up, I'm gonna have him come up first. Hang on. Is from Melrose Elementary School, and his name is Connor Huntley. And he's already gotten an award, and he's already gotten his trophy, but he's here today. And Connor is in fifth grade. And so maybe he can follow in Armand's footsteps because Armand, who we're gonna honor in just a second, has been a multiple-time winner. And Connor is just now starting in the fifth grade as the runner-up with, again, 24 rounds. So it was quite impressive. And so Connor. And this other young gentleman has been here several times. He is now the first person to have his name three times on the plaque. It is Armand Kirkendall from Miller Middle School. Come on up, Armand. And so Armand also has his name engraved on the Odom plaque, which will be displayed at his school, which is Miller Middle School. Armand won on the word insulin. And round 24. And Tim, if you'll come up and hold the lovely giant plaque. Armand will actually participate virtually in the regional Spelling Bee Fair in March. So if you'll go up with him.
Get a picture with Holly and Rick in it.
That would be great. Yours is all the way over to the right, Armand. But it was a really great match.
I think little brother's gonna overtake big brother.
Connor, do you remember what word you missed on the way out?
Amalgam.
It was amalgam. It was a really difficult word. So yes, I was gonna say, 'cause I went back to look. He had done such an amazing job, but it was amalgam was the word that he was, he missed on the way out. Thank you, boys.
His shirt says, "Just chill." Guess that's how he was able to do it, just chilling, not stressed.
Thank you, and congratulations again to both of you. Now, Mr. Hinky will give us an update on our strategic plan.
Hello, Jonathan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
A month has gone by, and it's gone by very quickly, but I'm back to provide a couple of updates for you on where we are with our strategic plan. So just want to remind you of the framework that you approved at the last board meeting. We are currently working on sections one through three, and I want to give you some updates on those three sections. Our process this time around is including opportunities for stakeholders to provide input, guidance and feedback. And Dr. Surensey later on will be requesting a board workshop with all of you for March to review some draft documents and seek your feedback and input along the way, as we will be at about a midpoint. And we'll want your guidance and feedback. In section one, the "We Are Putnam" section, the past month I have been facilitating small groups of stakeholder input using an interactive online platform called Mentimeter. We were seeking input on our vision, mission and our values in our next plan. A total of 168 employees, parents and community members, along with 54 students in grades nine through 12, participated in that interactive presentation. So that input is helping us as we start to craft draft documents. But the one thing I want to share with you is that it was very obvious that students and adults in our community want our next plan to be student-centered and to include strategies for a safe and caring environment. In section two, "Shaping the Future", this is a focus of section two, which is called "PCSD Portrait of a Graduate." Ms. Mandy Burney has been working with nine individuals to review and summarize the stakeholder input. She started collecting input. I know she did a workshop with all of you a long time ago. That took a lot longer because of the pandemic that happened in the middle of that, but she started that about a year ago. And so they've been reviewing that input. And they've identified six traits that we will be striving to develop in every PCSD student before graduation. And so in March, we'll be excited to share with you the results of that project and that part of the plan. In section three, "Our Course of Action", we have four working groups that have been formed around academic excellence, school facilities and operations, human capital and fiscal management, and the whole child. By the end of this month, all four of those groups will be up and working. Two of them have already met and started their work. A total of 74 employees, parents and community members have been invited to participate in those working groups. And they are tasked with developing strategies and actions for each of those focus areas. So that is my short, brief update for you as to where we are. Don't forget that we have a webpage devoted to this entire process as we work on our strategic plan, available on our district website. And at this time, I will take any questions that you might have for me.
I did receive an email from Mrs. Hawthorne, Nikki Hawthorne, regarding the whole child. And I did respond back telling her that, yes, I would be willing to participate in, with her group, the whole child. So I'm assuming they'll get back with me?
Yes, ma'am. That is one group that is scheduled for next week. The groups that have started, school facilities and operations has met, human resources and fiscal management has met. Next week, the whole child is meeting, along with academic excellence is meeting.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Okay, it's time for our public comment. We have several. Our first person, I will also call the person that will follow the first two people so that you'll know outside when it's your time to come in. The first person is Elizabeth Bacon Smith.
Madam Chair, could you remind them of our time limit? I believe Ms. Cormany's keeping time.
Okay, our time, you have three minutes. And if you will, when you come up to the podium, if you could state your name and address.
Yes, thank you. I'm Elizabeth Bacon Smith, 203 Morrison Road, Interlock in Florida, 32148. And first, I want to thank you for your decision regarding Melrose Elementary. I'm here to ask that you make the same or a similar one for E.H. Miller Jenkins and Mellon Elementary. Melrose is more organized at a community level and has more money for fundraising than these current schools. But these students are every bit as deserving and their future's every bit as important. And they are every bit as capable. They simply don't have the voice in front of you here today. They care just as much, though. Melrose came up with a viable plan. You could slow down and revisit the issues and adapt their plan to these Palaca Schools situation and make it work for a lot less money. Children are already disrupted enough, too much, by the pandemic. A change of location means new peers and new teachers who don't already know and care about them. Middle schoolers are at a vulnerable age for transitions already. Whether elementary, middle school or special needs, disruption is disorienting to students who need stability. Displacing them only spirals them downward. When I was with HRS, which is now DCF, and also worked as a cities and schools counselor, the school environment and their adaptation to it was a huge factor in their development and success. For children who already have disruption at home, school can be an oasis and stabilizer. Busing children adds both danger and time to their days on both ends. Parents can't just drop them off or them walk. Missing school and dropping out of school are all but guaranteed. A phrase I've never liked, yet is so graphic as to make its point, is lipstick on a pig. If grades predictably drop even more and dropouts increase, you won't be able to get new people to want to move here. And people already here will choose to leave. To cross-use a well-known and apt phrase, these schools and our schools will be judged by the content of their character and not by the color of their skin. We need to use the soft skills of direct education versus the brick and mortar of construction. People looking to move here and those looking to stay here are far more interested in academics than cosmetics. Invest money in necessary school supplies and equipment, i.e. a laptop and service for every child, teachers, tutors, after-school programs. The list is varied, yet addressable.
Ms. Smith.
Given fiscal responsibility. I just have one more sentence. Thank you. In quoting Martin Luther King, I want to add and close with the fact or wide perception that there is a discriminatory and racial element to all of this that I'm trusting others will address in greater detail and that you will take to heart and mind as you make your decisions. Thank you for the little bit of extra time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
We're gonna tell some of the folks in the back. Leo, if some of you guys need a chair, you can pull a chair out over here, maybe.
Do we allow to?
Oh, you can't have more people?
Yeah. We did set up a video out in the outside, I think in the lobby. Okay, next, we'll have Leo Granger and Shirley Granger. And they're going to speak separately. They each have three minutes, so it'll be six minutes.
Thank you. Leo Granger, I'm a resident of Interlocken, address 119 Miller Square. It was publicly noticed that Robert Jenkins was on the list of closing of a school. That really saddened me, 'cause I went there when it was Central Academy. I had previous, wrote a letter prior to this. I'm gonna let my wife read it.
And this letter is reminding the community of who Robert is and what his memory means to the community. "Robert Jenkins, greetings from the desk of the president and team. Our committee was created to shine a light on the history of the memory of the courageous PFC, Robert H. Jenkins Jr., while also utilizing his memory to advance the students of the community he called home. Robert H. Jenkins Jr. was born on June 1, 1948 in Interlocken, Florida. He graduated from Central Academy High, which is located in Palaca, Florida, in 1967. The school has since been renamed Robert H. Jenkins Jr. Middle School in commemoration of PFC Jenkins Jr. This following year after PFC Jenkins Jr. enlisted a year of service, enlisted into the United States Marine Corps on February 2, 1968, in Jacksonville, Florida. After a year of service, PFC Jenkins Jr. was killed in action, choosing to sacrifice his life for his comrade. For his heroic action, he became the only recipient of the Congressional Medal of Honor in Putnam County. PFC Jenkins Jr. is buried at Sister Springs Baptist Cemetery, 137 Hickory Road, Interlocken, Florida. In the name of Jenkins, our organization has created the Robert H. Jenkins Scholarship, Junior Scholarship, which is offered to two students that attend Interlocken High School at the end of every school year, a token of acknowledgement of their hard work. For the past eight years, the committee has sponsored a scholarship banquet in memory of PFC Jenkins Jr., with the exception of May 20th due to the coronavirus pandemic. The banquet was canceled. The banquet is annually held on Memorial Day weekend, the first Saturday, the Saturday, which is the third Saturday of May.
I'm here to appeal to the school board. If that happened to closing of Robert Jenkins that we are able to take the name home to Interlocken High School, right? U.S. Marine Corps Third Recon, the President Bob Hoover contacted me to find out what was going on with the Jenkins Middle School. Because the Third Recon also do a scholarship program at the Jenkins Middle School. So I took this to the council board of Interlocken. They personally couldn't vote on it 'cause it was not on the agenda, but they recommended that I get a name and be on that so they can vote on it next month. I also talked to Larry Harvey. He said he would bring it on the 23rd to the board meeting about it. The mayor of Interlocken supported the idea of bringing his name home where he was raised up in, and that is his hometown. Remember of a fallen hero, gone but not forgotten. Leo Granger, town of Interlocken resident, the founder of the Jenkins Scholarship Bank that held at Interlocken High School. Thank you.
Leo, didn't you have a letter you wanted to enter into the record?
Yes, I do have a record and agenda that I can enter into the record.
For those that don't know, Leo and his wife have been extremely active for many years in honoring Robert Jenkins's burial site and many ceremonies. I've known him a long time, and I know he thought the world of Mr. Jenkins as well.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna address Mr. Granger's concerns in my comments later, so.
Okay.
Chairman over here. Right here, Leo, Ms. Pickens would be the chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next public comment will be from Kim Duggar on the academic performance of Putnam County schools.
Kim Duggar, 142 Norton Fish Camp Road, Satsuma, Florida. Thank you for your service and this opportunity. I agree that we need to find solutions to improve our district standing and to revitalize Putnam County schools. What I say is not about condemning anyone but making the right decision. I was a teacher and a principal for 35 years, and the magnitude of that responsibility and yours cannot be overstated. We literally hold the future of students in our hands. I had a student one time tell me that there was only one teacher in the school who really cared about him. And when I asked why, he said, "Because she's the only one who does not let me put my head down." I was ashamed, because he was right. And I told him I was sorry. They say you will never see a hearse towing a U-Haul, and I'm not trying to be funny. But you will never see a school district that improved academically because it built new schools. The research is very clear on what makes successful school districts. It is the teacher in the classroom. Research shows it is not the money. It is not parental involvement, although that is positive. It is not technology, and it is not the physical environment. Although, to be fair, new schools have been shown to improve attendance. But we know our enrollment is down, so it doesn't apply to us. We teach them, and we can predict where they are going. Some of our, especially some of our elementary schools that are very low-performing schools. We switched that topic to the school-to-prison pipeline. I worked at Florida State Prison helping inmates earn their GED. Many of them told me they were from Putnam County. By the way, they were working on quadratic functions. They could have done that in school, but they were not expected to. Students in poverty need to be understood. We write them off and do not expect anything from them. In fact, we prefer that they put their heads down sometimes. As the principal of a Title I school for five years, we were an A school. We had poor kids, and most teachers worked in musty old portables. But these teachers were fantastic. They expected these kids to learn, and they did. Finally, I was told one time that effective leaders must be able to envision the results of their decisions before they make them. I ask you to consider this. If the decision is made to close these schools and displace our students, we will see our district ratings plummet even farther. We will see an increase in dropout rate and a major debt that will be virtually unable to recover for years to come. I don't want to be the one to have to tell those students I'm sorry. Do you? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duggar. James Steggi.
Dr. Surensey, members of the board. My name is Jim Steggi, 142 Norton's Fish Camp Road, Satsuma, Florida, two miles north of Palaca. First of all, I got a lot of thoughts. They're extemporaneous. But first of all, I'm concerned with the contracting of the services on this project. And I'm waiting for the public records request that I have made of the contract for the work that has been done to date. And to be assured that this project has been done with the Competitive Consultant Negotiations Act that is part of the state laws. I'm sure you're all aware of those. I've asked Mr. Bowling, and I've asked your public records people. I was hoping I'd get that in time, but I haven't had any further response. I, you know, I've been an architect, primarily in K-12 work for 40 years. I've taken schools from nothing to make them something special. You don't need, you know, I'm an architect. You don't need buildings, you need teachers. You need passion. You need programs. And this whole program, this whole plan is, Putnam County does not know what we're getting into right now. I mean, you all are here, and you're trying to get the word out, but people don't know. Today, you're gonna vote on the first step. The train is gonna start going down the tracks. You hopefully read my email. I was up at 12:30 getting it out, so it would get to you in time. Tonight is really the start of the 100 to the $300 million plan that you're gonna start. And once you get it started, you can't stop that train. None of you can stop it once you start moving these kids, 'cause there aren't gonna be the facilities. We're in a declining student enrollment. That is not the time to put money into big new schools, not in my mind. I can imagine where some of these ideas come from. I've been a competitor to the firms that you've been dealing with. I know what Pearson looks like. I know what all these fancy schools look like and how bright and special they can look to y'all. But I can tell you that a school in the middle of a town that pulls their students walking distance, we renovate what you need to renovate, you pass on the facilities that you don't, you make it work. I looked at your budget. You're somewhere around $90 million. How much of that is spent on maintenance? How much, how well do we maintain our schools over the last 50 years? I could go on and on. Give it time. This vote today is the start. This is a yes or a no on this whole plan. It needs to stop and go on hold now.
Thank you, Mr. Steggi. Next is Fran Rosano on the school closings.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I came here without the intent of speaking, just listening to what was being said. But I guess I got here really early, and there weren't too many people here, so I thought, well, I might as well speak up what's on my mind. My name is Fran Rosano. I live in Melrose. I live at 108 Swan Lake Trail there. And I was taken to task on Facebook because I came from Melrose. And people in Melrose are used to being overlooked and overrun in county decisions because we're over there on the border between us and Alachua County. So we're kind of used to this. But I feel like this plan, as I know it... So we're kind of used to this, but I feel like this plan, as I know it, is being put out, and it's too fast for such an ambitious undertaking. The communities, all of the communities, need a chance to respond, so the evaluation of what can possibly be lost in this process needs to be known before we make the mistake of going so far that we lose what's really important to our communities. We don't want to look back and say, well, there was a time when we had this, and be sad about it. So the evaluation of these losses, the possible losses to a community, need to be considered, and sometimes they're more than sticks and bricks. In the case of Melrose, it would be devastating to our community. Our school sits right there at the major intersection, and I have personal friends who went to Melrose for their entire school history, and it would just be a real, a real loss. So I don't want us to be guilty of throwing away our history, and I feel that this board needs to hear from all of the stakeholders in these respective communities before it goes forward. I don't feel that this is a time to be making a vote yea or nay as to whether something concrete happens. To begin this process in the midst of a pandemic, to me, is irresponsible at best and criminal at worst. If you're thinking of putting additional kids into schools that were not constructed for them, and you're thinking about doing this at the, come the end of August, that is a very, very irresponsible, foolish move, and I just wanted to be able to weigh in on that with this board, and thank you so much for being allowed to speak.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Kate Gallagher on school closure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm from Melrose, 1434 Baden Powell Road. Mailing address is Hawthorne, but I'm in Melrose, and I love being in Melrose, and I come here to ask you to slow this roll, delay the vote. We need to drill down for an intelligent, equitable future. Melrose is, I'm just so extremely proud of my village, resistance to the unacceptable plan of closing the elementary school. One of two excellent schools in the district, and we want to close it down. Somebody out of town came up with that idea. Melrose is, like being said by everyone, the centerpiece of our village. It's priceless. It's a priceless community school, and it must stay. I applaud your advocacy to keep it. There's so much going on. We need to slow the roll. We need to drill down. There are other priceless community schools on this chopping block. We're not getting the data to understand this plan is anything other than an expensive, community-destroying, and racist number crunch. We need to slow the roll. We need to delay this plan and drill down. Like Fran just said, we've got so many priceless things in these community schools. It appears our professional staff has fallen into money pit mentality versus leading us with creative, community-based, research-validated strategies. Kids are expensive. They are also our most important asset. We've got to slow this roll down. We need our most intelligent foot forward. Putnam County schools have a long history of unacceptable achievement gaps, a lack of systemic priorities in rehabbing those gaps, and that's just the tip of the equity iceberg. The failure of our district to address achievement gaps is unacceptable. Putnam currently has a lot of catching up to do with equality and equity, and we need to address racism in the schools. Slow the roll, delay the vote. Community schools are priceless. Closing the predominantly black community schools is absolutely unacceptable, unthinkable. It's an expect-a-lawsuit-for-discrimination kind of plan. Slow the roll, delay the vote, help us drill down on what our communities really need. Let's look at our priorities anew. This is an opportunity to grow together. I have worked, I have voted yes for every school bond that's ever come around, and I promise you I wouldn't vote for this one. It's just pie in the sky. We need to delay the vote. This plan lacks academic credibility, financial credibility, community credibility, big time, and I think we need to lay this vote, drill down, understand what we're talking about. There's nothing more important than our kids' future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is Jackie Huntley on the revitalization proposal.
Hello again.
Hi.
So I thought I knew what I was going to say, and after hearing everybody speak, this has become very heavy for me. So bear with me, and please know that even though I'm speaking from a place of gratitude for our school, I do feel for every other school that is facing closure. Good afternoon, Dr. Serenzi. Is Mr. Bowling here? And members of the school board. It's bittersweet to stand here today. My heart goes out to those who are here to represent other schools that face closure. I am here today to express my heartfelt gratitude for your willingness to incorporate district-wide feedback and to reimagine the proposal that led to such a community outcry just five weeks ago. After watching the most recent board workshop, I was very encouraged by Mr. Bowling's words when he said, "We can spend hours dissecting something, and we can think we know it all, but we often times find that we don't." Along the way, great innovative ideas are born. That is a powerful lesson for us all, and as we consider what it means to have bold leadership, humility, and flexibility need to be at the forefront. I know there must have been a lot of time and money invested into the original proposal. Consulting firms don't work for free, which is why it's even more amazing to me that a work group made up of volunteers was able to springboard off the original plan and come up with improvements in a matter of weeks. Improvements that not only meet the district's goals, but in many ways exceed original expectations. But something I learned a long time ago from an employer is that involvement breeds commitment. As a community, Melrose immersed itself trying to find ways to keep our school open. Then, our school's nonprofit group, Friends of MES, headed by one of our own amazing teachers, Ms. Sarah Ebert, announced its intent to help offset the cost of portables so that MES students could remain on campus during future phases of construction. At that moment, community involvement quickly morphed into financial commitment, and to date, over $30,000 has been pledged to meet the need. After the recent workshop, when news of the revised plan made headlines of the Palaca Daily News, an entire community breathed a sigh of relief. But more important than that, our students and teachers had a tremendous weight lifted. I have brought with me today countless expressions of gratitude written by our students who wish to thank you for keeping their school open. Each drawing, card, and letter has been scanned and will be emailed to you as a multi-page PDF. Five weeks ago, your inbox was inundated with emails pleading that you reject the plan to close our schools. Today, I want to make sure you receive an equivalent outpouring of appreciation and love for your part in keeping our school open. Lastly, there is one more group I want to mention today, one collective voice that has been silent through it all. In every article that has been written and every interview that has been broadcast, there has been zero representation for those who would be profoundly impacted by these closures, our teachers. I want to go on record to say that their silence should not be mistaken for consensus. Our teachers did not deserve to learn about the original proposal in an email. News that the school would close at the end of this school year must have felt like an eviction notice nailed to their very own homes. My heart breaks every time I stop and consider the flood of emotions that surely rushed over them that afternoon. To think that job assurances would quell their concerns shows a lack of understanding for everything our teachers have invested in the school. And while I firmly believe that our teachers deserve competitive wages, job security, you should never underestimate the role of inclusion and collaboration in job satisfaction. At the end of every exhausting day, the motivation to keep going comes from a smiling colleague across the hall, encouraging words from the principal, a breakthrough moment with a student, or a heartfelt thank you from a parent, but to instead receive an email announcing proposed school closures was a devastating blow. Last paragraph. If you really want to do right by our teachers in the future, involve them in the process, ask them for their input, and do these things at the first sign of challenges to come. Our teachers are problem solvers and innovators whom we've entrusted to help shape our children's minds. They are the heartbeat of every school, and their years of service have earned them the right to have their ideas taken into account. If you want to revitalize a school district, listening to and supporting our teachers continues to be the single best investment you can make for the future. Thank you again for your time and for your commitment to our schools.
Thank you. Our next public comment will be from Bernice Johnson on school closures.
I'm Bernice Johnson, and I resign at 1108 North 18th Street here in Palaca. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on closures of Putnam County schools. I just wanted to talk about Jenkins Middle School. That's my main focus, but all of the schools are important. Back in 2004, we in our community, Central Academy, the historic African-American first accredited school, was turned over to the housing authority. It is actually, it is actually a very soul eye. This has, this has nothing to do with Jenkins, but what I'm trying to say is if we close Jenkins School, that reflects the same thing continuously in our community, and it's unjust, and it is not fair to our people that have lost a lot and continue to lose a lot. So I'm here to support that you do not close Jenkins Middle School. It, in my opinion, it is, it represents history. It also represents the great life that Robert Jenkins did for this country, and to be slapped in the face like that, it is a great insult, and it is, and it's a sin, in my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our next public comment will be from Patricia Daniel on school closures.
Good evening.
Hi.
All right, my name is Patricia Daniel. I resign at 1305 Eagle Street. On matter of fact, I'm right across the street from the school that we was talking about that wasn't taken care of, and I deal with a lot of the kids that get off the bus from Jenkins School, so I'm over there as a mentor and teaching other kids to learn how to have leadership skills. We're trying to encourage them to be proud of their area and their community. Now, in order to do this, they've got to have a school they're proud of. Like everyone has said, it's not proper, and it wouldn't be right and moral to take something away from kids and the people when they are just learning to love their community. You should be able to find ways in your budgets to fix the problems because you caused the problem. The people didn't cause the problem. It's your responsibility to make sure the budgets are right, that you can keep these peoples and these children in their homes so they can take pride and they can have ownership. Right now, if you close those schools down, you haven't thought about the impact it's going to do on the neighborhood. And with the epidemic we've got going on, we don't need no more failures to show up online or anywhere. I came here in 2004. We bought those, that whole city block, and I've been working with those peoples, everybody that loves their community, and this would just destroy them. Right now, it's not their fault because the people who run the budgets, who make sure everything is there, evidently is not doing a job. I run a business for 42 years. I'm 67 years old, and I know when you don't run it right, it don't come out right. You fail. Now, if you don't want to fail, you need to find a better way to fix the problem. Those buildings my granddaughter went to, one, she loves it. I don't see those buildings falling down. Now, the money need to be put in other places, and you look at Palaca. When I came here, 15, 16 years ago, I saw a good, vibrant place. I come from Atlanta. There's no way they're going to let their historical schools go down like here, but I saw that you all was a growing place that I can grow with. Now to go backwards is not a good thing. You need to look at your budgets. We are general contractors, me and my husband, built for 40-some years. He could build your buildings from down to up and tell you where you got your problems at and where you need to correct them. Fix your schools. Show your kids and your families and the people in the community you care, not just care about spending money, and keep spending money because it won't work. I love the peoples over there. I love the peoples in Palaca, but they need peoples to care about them, and we need to see it in the street and in the community. Money can be used in other places, so let's not be so quick to just spend money because it's there. It's our money you're spending, and if we ain't happy with it, we won't let it happen. So you need to sit down and find out how we can repair the problems that you think you're having with the school, and let these kids not have to be stressful. They're having enough with COVID going on. You're stressing these kids out, and you're stressing families out, and you can do better than that. So that's what I ask, that you take your time and don't be so quick with spending your money, and you're spending our money. Look at else, we are the one that you look and count the numbers who say no. And so, no, we're not going that route. We need to put some money back in Palaca. Palaca really needs more money. You've got street problems, you've got a lot of problems. So I have no idea, I can't figure out why you would be spending money on building another school and tearing people's families apart. So what you going to do about the children that's going into stress and they crying and everybody killing each other in the neighborhood? All that stuff going to happen. Maybe you don't see it because you don't live there. So you think about it, not just the school where I'm at. Jenkins kids, they get off right there in front of my building. I've got a whole city block I bought over there, and I'm working hard to raise them kids. It takes a village. We ain't by ourselves, because you over there on the other side, think about the peoples on this side. And Melrose, I feel for you guys, too. Fight for what you want. Don't let them take it. You pay the bills around here, not them, and if you don't do it right, they're going to, they're going to stop you. So I'm sorry. I'm Patricia Daniel. I love everybody, but hey, put the money back into the people and your town, and you'll see how much the people out there in the world love that, because you are growing people. When I came here, this little old town, I said, oh, you can do anything here because ain't nothing, no competition. So now I'm bringing talent shows. I'm bringing leaderships here. Let's get all of that in there so we can kind of take pride in our peoples. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel.
A little correction was, I'd like to say that I think the old Central, original Central Academy probably transferred to the Housing Authority around 2008, because I had, I had to deal with this like the superintendent is dealing with it now years ago because we had to vacate the compound. The state wouldn't give us money
Thank you.
to improve the old school that was the storage facility, the warehouse at the time. And I know the state, Representative Joe Pickens, don't, had them appropriate a quarter of a million dollars to research that, how to fix that facility, and I don't know who got paid the quarter of a million dollars. I mean, but it sure didn't go to put the roof on the school. I mean, we wound up doing that back then to try to salvage it as much as we could until they could figure out what to do. We even discussed at the time, the present board that was there and myself, discussed building a standalone center at the Jenkins Middle School to house local memorabilia and educational history, but the community, the group at the time, didn't want that. So if you ride by over there now, you'll see the school has fallen in and it's gone to pieces, and I don't know where the quarter of a million dollars went because I had, you know, there were people that ran for office saying they were going to fix it, and the state won't allow you to put money. allow you to put money in certain facilities. And I've listened to people over there and over here. Well, I can tell you, there's many over there of whatever racial complexion you are. Palaca and Putnam County is very diverse, and it's not that anybody's trying to do anything to any specific neighborhood. Melrose worked out well. I think the committee and the superintendent made a wonderful decision based on, obviously, about a half a million dollars or quarter of a million dollars of FTE that's coming across the county line into Putnam County, so it makes it more salvageable. But I don't know. We'll have, I'll have time at the end to address some of this stuff, but it's just really, I mean, I heard people talking about how bad it was, and we've got a 90.1% graduation rate that's been achieved. So, I mean, it's going up, and I'm very proud of where it is. I don't think you'll find any school district in America that doesn't have achievement gaps. You've got a lot of them right now that don't even have school going on. Kids committing suicide. But be that as it may, I'll quit. Now, go ahead.
Okay, I believe this is our last public comment. It's Rebecca Cordova on Jenkins closing.
Thank you for allowing me to be your last comment of the day. I brought my kids here. They're out in the little cubicle area. You'll see there my daughter, Anna, who went to Jenkins. And I'm here as a parent. You might know that I've been in education for many years. I'm a UF professor of education. I am the chair of the Putnam County Democrats. But I really wanted to talk to you a little bit about what it means to be a parent at Jenkins for almost three of my four kids. And to just say that something that y'all already know, because I believe everyone here, for the most part, has been in education and was an educator, has worked in communities, has been with young people. So it's not as if you don't know the things that people are saying. But I guess I'd just like to say it again that investing in schools takes everything we have. And every day, you asked us as parents to show up and invest in those schools. You asked us to go to PTA meetings. You asked us to donate. You asked us to have kids in sports. You asked us to volunteer. You asked us to fully invest everything we had, and we did. Even if it needs attention and even if things could be improved, we still showed up. And so, it probably won't come as a surprise to you now that it hurts when you show up for something and then it just gone. And there might be all kinds of reasons why it's gone, and those reasons probably make sense, but that doesn't negate the realities of the loss. So I'm thrilled that Melrose has been saved. I will love public schooling. I will fight for every public school and every teacher. But this should have been a county plan. This shouldn't be where you're pitting Melrose's parents against Jenkins's parents, fighting, fighting, desperate. They want you to vote yes on this, and here we are begging you to slow down. Why? Should never be like that. Just because they can send kids across the district lines, they're better than us? We don't have another middle school to send our kids to like Melrose's parents do. So I'm asking, please, slow down, hold the vote. You don't know, at least I haven't seen, what the impacts on kids are going to be specifically. When I go pick up my daughter and my son at Jenkins and I see all those kids walking home, what's the impact on those children going to be? And does this plan have a disparate impact on schools that are predominantly attended by students of color? We know it will. You all know these numbers inside and out. You know where students of color go to school. Those schools are the ones closing. Right or wrong, like it or not, it's just the truth. Please, on behalf of the Putnam County Dems, the Executive Committee, and myself as a Jenkins parent, please hold the vote. Let the community work harder. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment.
I did not fill out one of those.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She can fill one out. Can I take a break? We'll be right back. While she's filling it out. I said, the chairman.
No, she's filling it out.
Oh, okay. Okay, good, good.
While she's filling that out, can I just show them these cards? Would that be appropriate use of time? Or not?
Madam Chair. I'm going to have to show you the cards.
We look at them and pass them.
Okay.
I mean, I would like these back because we're actually going to create a book, but I just wanted you to kind of get a feel for what we've got. Let me give you a stack here. We have representation from our sixth grade honors program all the way down to our pre-K and everything in between, over 150 letters that have been written, just showing their appreciation for your willingness to rethink the proposal. And of course, I don't expect you to read them all now, but I have scanned them all in, and I will be emailing all of them to you in multi-page PDFs, so that you can look at them at your leisure.
I don't have a name. Okay, we have Ann Keys on Save Our Schools.
Good evening. To the board members, Mr. Cerencey, I know a lot of you here are familiar with the last name Keys. My mom was a school bus driver for years, and she transported kids to Jenkins. I live right across, I live across the street from Jenkins. And that school, I watch it. When your alarm systems go off and kind of go haywire, I call and report it, okay? Jenkins, I attend Jenkins School, my siblings, my children, my grandchildren. Please save the school. There is a lot of history, sentimental feelings about Jenkins. Part of Jenkins on the west side was, it started out as Caria Blocker Junior College, and then they added Jenkins. This school has a lot of history, a lot of history. And again, yes, there are a lot of kids that walk to school. Now, I'm going to say this, and please remember this. When you get married, you leave Palaca, and years later you come back home, when you go into the service, and depending on how many years you go, you come back home, there are two places you visit. You visit your own homestead where you grew up, and you visit your school. You visit your school. I was a substitute teacher for three years, and Jenkins was one of the schools that I substituted. When I retired, I said, okay, Lord, my plan B was to work with children, but I did not know I would be working with children in the school district. But you know what? I loved it. And a lot of kids to this day, when they see me, and they'll say, Ms. Keys. And I say, hi. They say, you're my substitute teacher. Ninety-five percent of those kids belong to Jenkins, so they remembered me. Not that they were any bad kids. We need to remember Jenkins. We need to remember Jenkins. And before that timer goes out, anyone and everyone in here who has worked in Jenkins, attend Jenkins, raise your hand.
I have grandkids attending Jenkins.
Ms. Crawford, I see you over there.
I'm here. My dad was the principal there.
Well, thank you. So Jenkins has a lot of history, and I was listening to the news, and Melrose spoke on this also, that there's a lot of history. Let's just fix whatever need to be fixed structurally, okay? Thank you for your time, and I pray that all of you make the right decision, not just for money-wise, but for the community. Thank you.
Ms. Keys?
Yes.
Did you say your last name is Keys?
K E Y S, and that's not Alicia Keys.
Was your mother Eldora?
Yes.
She was my bus driver.
See?
She was.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Buckles really knows my mom real well, right? Yes.
Under the desk.
Yes. So I wasn't going to speak, but she told me to get up, okay?
Very good.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Keys.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have no public hearing, no items to be approved that our superintendent approved under emergency powers, so we'll move to the consent agenda.
Madam Chairman, we did have an item to be moved.
That would be in new business. It's actually, it's item O2. That's going to be removed from our new business section. So, Ms. Gillyard, do you have anything that you would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I'd like to pull item F2, revitalization of facilities plan.
Anything else?
No, ma'am. Everything else was taken care of.
Thank you. Mr. Buckles?
I think Ms. Gillyard has pulled the right item that's the elephant in the room right now.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Crawford?
She has no phone.
Ms. Crawford, do you have any?
I have nothing to pull.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
F2.
F2, and I also, F2.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We accept the consent agenda minus F2.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles to approve the consent agenda minus F2, and a second by Mr. McGinnis. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, no. Motion carries five zero. Ms. Gillyard?
Okay. In light of everything that we have heard from our stakeholders, from our parents, former students, and I'm just going to ask too that we reconsider, slow it down, and look at specifically Phase One scenario and bullet number seven, closure of Jenkins. And so is not to just pull this, but ask that we slow it down and look at the process, you know, rethink the process, get the input that's being asked of us by our constituents, our stakeholders.
Mr. Buckles?
It's now for discussion.
Having set where the CEO sits, there are timelines and things that he has to adhere to in order to qualify for funding, to get things rolling that will benefit other facilities. I'm not, I would have to, I would have to ask him for a recommendation on that, and I don't think he'd be bringing it to us now if he wasn't trying to get it, you know, on the road. I listened to some things today that were very concerning. I mean, you look at where Jenkins is, you know, there is some history that has racial imbalances in the past. You don't find many schools that are built next to railroad tracks. I doubt the state will let you put a lot of money in that facility now, being adjacent to a railroad track. I'd have to defer that to Mr. Douglas. I mean, you could probably upgrade some of what you have, but I don't think you could even go buy a piece of property adjacent to a railroad track and build a school. But I don't know that for a fact. I've heard a little bit about that. I look at the old Browning Pierce for the, and I go back in history to when Ms. Crawford's dad had to fight the fight to consolidate schools that were traditionally segregated, and how awful that was for the, you know, the people that had to deal with that, the kids and upset them. And it's just, there's no way to not say that that isn't an issue to many people. Yeah, it's, obviously, it's an issue, but if you look at where Celo is now, that's a fairly mixed neighborhood, and you go out around Rolling Hills, and it's predominantly, I would guess, black now. I just, I don't see that. I'm going back to when the old bus compound was the original Palaca Central. I went through that. I had capacity, room only, people upset. We're going to vacate that because your floor was falling through, and we couldn't put money in it from the state, and people wanted it all refurbished back to the natural order and have a, you know, and I tried to build a facility to house educational memorabilia from the black community at Jenkins. That wouldn't go and make them happy. So anyway, the next superintendent wound up giving it to the Housing Authority, and that quarter million dollars vanished or went somewhere. Anyway, I have to say that we're going to have to move. I mean, I would never have thought that anybody would even think we needed to have teachers involved with a state study to start studying the age of our facilities and how we could best obtain funding, like a woman, I think Ms. Cordova mentioned earlier, to try to start this process. This has been going on a couple of years. It wasn't rocket science. And you look at Melrose, it's not that we're going to lose kids at Melrose to go across the county line. We've got kids coming from other counties to Melrose that would certainly deplete our budgets to close to a half a million dollars. So it's a no-brainer. If the community is going to work with us and try to figure that out, we got to do something to move forward. If you look at what was said, we talk about teachers giving their heart and being in a know. Teachers really don't know where their assignment going to be in any given school year, neither do principals, until there is a statutory timeline of where they will be assigned, and they will be assigned to a site according to the needs of the students. So if you don't have enough students to stay at a school site, that teacher's going to wind up somewhere else. And if you've got X amount of facilities and student stations, and you've got 300 students below capacity or 400 at a school site, then you're going to have to find a way to make an equitable distribution until you can make the changes that are necessary to revitalize that school and community. It hurts, but I don't see any way. I mean, I'd have to hear the superintendent tell me that it would be beneficial to the process to delay a vote. I just, I don't see it. I listened to an architect earlier talk about bidding processes, and I, you know, even that is cut and dried. You piggyback off other bids of other districts and other units. It's, this is, it is a very, it is very broad, and it's trying, they're trying to get it narrowed down and focused, and this too will change and morph over time, and I hope we can find some way to maintain the facility if, and I think we have a commitment that that's going to happen, that it will be a facility to be used by young people from here on. But we've got to get, we've got to get... we've gotta get, we gotta get, and it's like the gentle lady said, you know, it wasn't, it isn't the community's fault. It's our fault for trying to keep too many schools open with not enough students. You talk about declining enrollment. It isn't that everybody left Putnam County. It is that you've got charter schools, you've got private schools, you've got homeschooling, you've got different modes of education that take away from the public school system, and you don't have as many children attending public schools as you used to. And, and we're trying to get into a posture where it'll be attractive for parents to send their kids back into a public school. And I feel pretty strongly about that, because I've been through this road before on a bond issue. It's, it's, it's not fun to have people come and tell you you're heartless and cruel, and you just woke up one morning and decided to ruin their school and their neighborhood. It's just not that way. I mean, all my grandkids so far that have been through middle school have all been at Jenkins and James Daylong, and, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't see it as a racial issue, but I guess somebody brought it up and made it sound like that, and that's just not even, that's not even worth discussing to me. I just, you know, you're closing, you're looking at doing the same thing with CLO, and everybody says over there, but I still, you know, all the schools are gonna be impacted to some degree, and they're gonna all be improved under this current plan, and we have to have a chief executive officer give us the information that we need. So I'll rely on his recommendation when it comes down to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mr. McGinnis?
Well, one thing that has been said before about this whole venture is it's bold leadership, it's compassionate, and it's humble leadership, because we've kinda narrowed some things down that we probably should've chunked out better, as we've said in a couple of little work groups that we've had. But one thing that I think our leadership team has looked at, though, is our funding in the future, and we have to keep in sight that we are still, when we do this, we are still working with our strategic plan as a board too, correct?
Right.
Right.
But just this is from today, and this is, imagine, imagine a school district just closing because there's no funding. I don't think we can be put in that position, but what's to say that it might not happen? I mean, if we're not looking at the future the way through these eyes that we're looking for advancement of our students so they can conceive, and they are gonna be prosperous, it's gonna be rough at the beginning. One thing that was, that I learned through all this was that I needed to shut up and listen, and there's a reason that you have two ears and one mouth. And one thing that I heard loudly and clearly was people are not informed about this full plan. The idea that Melrose was closing, yes. Was it gonna be a transition? It was gonna be moved to Aquila. Then Aquila was gonna be moved back with Melrose. So essentially, there were three moves in my area. That was a concern. My idea is let's put it all back like it was in 1991. Let's go back to the original plan. That idea was never brought up, but that's how we used to have it before Aquila was built. We're not gonna go to that. And Melrose, I can't say anything that would diminish what they've already done, and I don't want to, because I knew Melrose could pull it through. They were gonna have the backing. They've brought up some great examples. Look at Waldo. Waldo School went away. That town is gone. And I'm familiar with Waldo, because when I was in College of Education, that's where we interned, and it's not there anymore. I'm thrilled about the prospects of Mellon. I went to school at Mellon. It broke my heart to think it was gonna be gone forever. I was the first, second grade class at Mellon now proper. The fact that it can be, and Ms. Akins brought it up, if you, you know, if you don't have anyone in your family that is challenged. I have a brother. He's lived in a group home since he was 10, and it's a challenge. When you have a family member, there's a lot of places you can't go, or a lot of places, things you cannot do. So the fact that our board, our staff thought enough foresight to bring in Ms. Akins, for one, to say, you know, we hear you, let's do this, and the fact that we had people in our maintenance group that came with a better plan, thank you, Jesus, right? That it's right across from a high school that offers, what can we offer? Pre-K, ESE pre-K, what a solution. Back in 2009, I saw a pre-K up in Georgia. We keep comparing to St. John's County. Pre-K was at Tifton, Georgia. My youngest son was going to a celebration there, because they were celebrating a young man who went through muscular dystrophy camp, and he excelled at this huge, you know, result, and they were celebrating this young man. But I got to see a pre-K center, and I thought, wow, we really could do that. And the fact that we could have one there with E.H. Miller, and look at the possibilities. We have a high school with seven through 12, which it will be. They can mentor. They can show these children, like, all kinds of things. And, and again, the plus is about pre-K in with challenged students. It gives, it gives those young children an awareness, compassion, sympathy, something a lot of adults do not have, and do not how, and children do not how, how to relate with it, because the adults don't know how to relate with it. So it gets back to, if we can do that, that would be good. But I hear you loud and clear about when they are, when we are singling out schools. That's one thing that I, my conversation, you're gonna lose me in the conversation when I hear fellow educators and parents talk disparagingly about a school six miles down the road. It really bothered, bothers me, and I'll end the conversation, because five years ago, I worked in both of those schools as a graduation coach, and my goal was to center on at-risk kids, third grade. And yeah, there are at-risk kids at Melrose, believe it or not, but there are a lot more at Aquila. And it doesn't say anything about the parent, or the schools, or anything like that. It's just that when a student goes up to get what he needs, that teacher might not, whatever's on the menu might not be for what that kid needs at that time. So, I mean, every student is different, and this whole process, I'm good with some of this, but there's some issues that I, I know you know, I mean, I'm about safety and the achievement of our students, so I'm gonna have to move on down to Phase Three. I'm good with Phase, I can't see, I can't see anything that's not positive about us making our students have a better place to go to school and learn, and we do not miss out on the funds going into maintaining an old building, older than me, and those, that money, those monies could've gone into the classroom. That's the bottom line. I don't know, I can say a lot more, because I've got about six or seven pages of notes that I made, and I'm, I'm still listening.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Ms. Crawford, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, there are a couple of things I'd like to say. I understand the emotions that all of these speakers have about closing these schools. I completely understand it. But I keep going back to a couple of things, and one is, I've mentioned a couple of times, the community schools that my dad closed when he was superintendent of schools in Putnam County many years ago, Bostwick, Barden, Johnson, and I think even in South Putnam. I'm not gonna swear to that, but I think there was one in South Putnam. And people protested, and they spoke out, and they were angry, but the board voted to close the little community schools down, and they were, and those students were afforded the opportunity to eventually go to newer, better schools. And those people that had been so vocal about, and so angry about the school's closing, came back and were so thankful, because their students were going to schools and buildings that were state-of-the-art. We have band-aided some of these schools until we don't have enough Band-Aids to put on them anymore. We have too many schools for too few students, and now is the time to consolidate some of these schools. And there are certain criteria that we have to meet to get certain funding to do that. And I just think now is the time.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. I would just like to reiterate much of what everyone has said. I did understand at our workshop that Jenkins was going to, or was gonna be used as a community facility, at least the gymnasium and some other MOUs that we were going to enter into. So, and I also understood that we would maintain the property. It wasn't going to just be desolate. Obviously, I'm, you know, from South Putnam, and I do have some concerns about Middleton Bernie and being overcrowded, but I also know that the district is working on continuing to lessen that. And so I don't think, I mean, our district is, has been so flexible and, you know, really gone out of their way to try to address every problem that's been brought up, you know, the problem of Jenkins and entering into the MOUs. I was very concerned about Miller, the gymnasium, and the auditorium, and, you know, they, they're gonna do the MOUs with our city. So I just, no one, no one is gonna want their community school, or the school that they graduated from, to close. But I, I just cannot say enough about the vision of this district. And so when I think of this, yes, it's going to be difficult. Yes, it will be difficult, and it will be more difficult for some rather than others. But what I have focused on is 10 years down the line. That, that's, and I may not even be around to see that, but I know that our children will benefit from that. And, but no, we can't make everyone happy. But I do believe that this is a good thing for our children. So.
Madam Chair, unless, does anyone else have anything else?
Ms. Gillyard, would you like to add anything?
I'd like for the superintendent to share that part that you mentioned, Mrs. Pickens, regarding what the intentions are for Jenkins, if you would share that.
Yeah, first of all, we are, every middle school in Putnam County is gonna be impacted. You know, we're closing, the proposal is to close Miller. The proposal is to close CLO, and make that for other uses, because the elementary schools will be keeping their sixth graders in their school. Jenkins, of course, would be closed, because those students would be part of the 7-12 configuration at Palaca High School, which is all, all four of our high schools would have a grade seven to 12 configuration. So it's all part of the bigger plan. That is the reason why Melrose is remaining open, because that is part of our K six plan. We are, by having sixth grade at Melrose, that helps us with that capacity. So at the point we do build a school at Melrose, then we would have to put students in portables while that school's being built. But we were able to work that out because of the K six configuration, which came about through community input. I do wanna say Jenkins, and I have a heart for Jenkins. I was a principal there for 10 years. But I do realize that that is a, first of all, like many of our schools, it is, has too much capacity. You know, our declining enrollment makes that school more expensive to operate based on the number of students that we have there, as does many of our schools around the district. So it has a capacity issue, has, it's very expensive to operate that school. And so by closing that and consolidating those students at Palaca High School, it's gonna allow us to be more efficient and to offer more, really, the 7-12 program at Palaca High School and the other high schools, it's really gonna benefit these students, because now we're gonna have no more transitions. Once they enter seventh grade, it'd be one continuous effort, and these students will be exposed to a lot of the programming that they will eventually take advantage of at senior, in senior high schools. So I see a big advantage with our acceleration programs, our career programs, offering more teachers with certification, or be able to meet the needs at both the junior high and the senior high level, because they'll be right there on the same campus. So there's a, there's a lot of advantages to the 7-12 concept. But again, we are not singling out just Jenkins. All of our middle schools are being impacted, including Price. Price Middle School in Interlaken is gonna be, will become a part of the Interlaken High School, okay? Even though their campus is physically separate, our proposal is to make that all one campus. So all of our middle schools are being impacted, and just the comment about the building itself, it is our intent to keep these buildings occupied through either district staff, or some kind of lease, or whatever the case might be. The worst thing we can do is to close a school and just let the building sit empty. We're not gonna do that, because that's when you have buildings crumble, get mold, and all that. That will not happen, but we will occupy that building in one form or fashion. But it, it is not operating efficiently with students because of the declining enrollment. And I think it's gonna be very, very positive for the students that go to Jenkins. Like I said before, they're gonna have many benefits at the high school they have not had separately at Jenkins. And just cutting out, just having one transition between elementary and high school is gonna do nothing but help these kids, because the way it is now, they transition from fifth grade to sixth grade, they transition from sixth grade to the seventh, eighth grade school in here at Palaca, and then they transition again to the high school. So those transitions set those kids back. So we wanna reduce the transitions and give those kids every opportunity to be successful the minute they go into seventh grade. And this is nothing against Jenkins at all, believe me. There's nobody that loves Jenkins more than I do. I spent a quarter of my career there, okay? But again, I'm thinking of, like Ms. Crawford mentioned, I'm thinking of years from now, we've gotta make some tough decisions now. I use the analogy of stepping on that tightrope. We've gotta get across that divide, and when we get to that other side, man, we're gonna look back and say, you know what? We took some chances. We took some risk, and the kids that went to Jenkins and went to Melrose, all these kids are gonna have a benefit like we cannot imagine. And it's not just about buildings. It's about, it's about providing the best opportunities for our kids and our teachers. If we don't reduce the costs now, I'm talking by next year, we could see some job offs. It's already gonna be a tough year budget-wise from the state. If we don't start reducing our expenses, we're gonna lose some teachers, we're gonna lose some non-instructional employees. We're doing everything I can, we can, to bring the best teachers to our kids. We don't want that money going into taking care of a building like we have in the past. So I just wanna assure you, this plan is as equitable as we can make it. We're not trying to single out any particular population. We have to work very closely with a group of professionals who have given us very sound advice. They've worked in a number of districts on the same item, and I think it's good to get some objective advice, and, and look beyond the emotional aspect of this, and look at, what do we need to do to really make our district financially sound, so we can bring the best education to our kids, and take care of our teachers, and be competitive? I don't know if that answers your question?
Some of it. I was asking, Mrs. Pickens mentioned that. Uh, some of it, I was asking, uh, Mrs. Pickens mentioned that, uh, I know you said that some teachers or something would be there. I recall you mentioning that you had spoken with the mayor about, uh, I can't remember.
Yeah, the, the community center.
Community center.
Yes.
Yeah, it's our intent, and I think Mr. Bowlen mentioned this too, it's our intent to, uh, especially that community center with the gym and the office and the, you know, the old cafeteria was in there, um, is to enter in some kind of agreement with the city or, or one of the local organizations so it can continue to serve kids in that community.
I've talked with the recreation director about after-school mentoring programs over there and everything.
Yeah, there's a lot of possibilities, and I think, yeah, that's a vibrant part of that community, and we wanna continue that. But we're not gonna let buildings just crumble and go disrepair. We're gonna continue using those buildings, but for a different purpose.
It's just that, you know, I'm, the history, making sure that's not lost, that's what hurts me. Probably, nobody in here knows that my mother was a part of the first women's state championship to come to Putnam County under Lefty Turner. I have the picture in my home, but it's, it's nowhere else. It's, it's, it's gone.
Well, we appreciate.
And that's what I wanna say.
Yeah.
History can't be lost.
Yeah, we appreciate history, believe me. We don't want, we don't wanna lose those memories, and we don't want to take away something that is really meaningful and valuable to people. But at the same time, we have to make some decisions about can we continue to preserve buildings or repurpose them so our kids get the most benefit, okay? I don't want to take away from our children and the future because of historical past. I think the two can come together and preserve that. I don't want to sacrifice the benefits that our kids will see down the road. I think Ms. Crawford had a comment.
Oh, okay.
Well, you know, it, I kinda have some emotions about, uh, CLO, which was Palatka South High School where I attended high school for four years. Um, it also was where I taught my first two years of school. And my mother taught there for Lord of Mercy forty years. My dad was superintendent with that school, was built. So I have a lot of emotional attachment to that building as well as to some others in Putnam County. But I can't live in the past, I have to think ahead to the future and to what is best for the students in Putnam County. Thank you.
By all means, I, I, I see the data. I understand eighteen schools, two thousand two hundred sixty-three students less than Flagler County, so I've, I've looked at all of it. I'm just saying, yes, we need to do what we need to do because we don't want to have employees losing their jobs. But let us not forget history. It, it, it just can't be tossed out with the, with the, with the bathwater.
Just one last thought would be, you know, we looked at it before, maybe approach Kat Kamak or someone that could maybe get some type of appropriation to, to build a facility that would be under the jurisdiction of the neighborhood facility or the, the city, because we're gonna maintain parts of the facility. I mean, all you can do is reach out, and if you can't do it, you can't do it. But I know when Joe Pickens was the state representative, he got a quarter of a million dollars. Now, of course, I don't know where it went, but it might, it, but you may know. But I mean, that's something to look at, but I, I'd have to say, I, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion if, if you're ready to have one.
I, I will, I do wanna just mention, I talked to the superintendent. Yes, ma'am.
If, and I pray not, but if Jenkins, if you decide to close, could it be used as a YMCA? That way, the, the kids can.
We've, we've traditionally have leased out.
Okay.
School facilities to after-school Y programs in the past. I don't know if we have any currently doing that, probably not. But I mean, that's not unheard of, but I'm sure that, and I'm speaking out of turn here for the superintendent, but I'm sure he'd, he'd, he'd welcome any community ideas that we could participate in possibly.
Yeah, we're negotiating with the city, and, and I can't say right now.
Yeah, we're still in the early stages of.
Yeah, I can't say it's gonna be YMCA or the city, whoever, but our intent is, is to continue with being used by some group that's gonna serve that community.
Yes, because give the kids something to do over on the north side. Give them something, you know, it's too many broken windows, okay? You know, you know that syndrome, you know?
I came to, I came, I came with my grandson the other day, just turned four years old, to a ballgame the other night. And the recreation director, none of the parents showed, there was only two kids. He was one and another one. The rest of the parents didn't bring the kids, you know, and so it's, it, something needs to be done in Palatka, but it's gotta come from.
Amen.
I mean, it's, it's gotta come from all of us and not just some of us, you know?
Okay, and one other question, um, whenever there's a hurricane, the gym has, I think it's been open maybe twice as a shelter. I've been in my house over forty years, okay?
It would not meet hurricane standards.
So it's not hurricane standard?
No, ma'am, state, state, the state approves hurricane facilities, or I could let someone else answer.
It's been a place, it's been used as a place of refuge after the storm goes by, but it's not hurricane rated, so it cannot be a hurricane shelter like some of our other facilities.
SREF and the state requires any new buildings to be built to hurricane shelter standards and, and the new safety standards that are in place because of school shootings. Everything has changed, you can't just go back and take the old school from nineteen forty-eight and make it, you know, it's, it's, it's crazy. It, it's the, I guess it's the times we live in, it is, it is awful.
Okay, and I'm glad Sandra have, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gueyard.
Uh-uh.
She has.
I am who I am.
That you have from your mom a memorabilia because I and a lot of the community, we don't have a clue what happened to the memorabilia at C A High.
That's a shame.
We don't have a clue, and we kicked everybody's butt that came to Palatka. Okay? But where, you know, I, I looked outside one day and somebody had put a chain around the bulldog.
Well, listen.
And pulled it over.
John, if you get a chance.
But we need to find.
Look around and see if you've got any of that memorabilia, you know where it might be stored at some of the sites.
Okay.
John Chastain. I mean, we had, we had a museum room at the Campbell Building that housed all kind of, of school memorabilia and.
That's what I'd like to see.
I don't even know where that went.
That's what I'd like to see.
There's a lot of trophies somewhere.
Well, that's what I tried to build years ago on the Jenkins campus, and it didn't.
I'd love to see that.
It was a political football.
God bless your mom.
Oh, yes, well, she's, she's right here, but she's up there.
Absolutely.
She speaks through me.
Wonderful lady.
Yes, yes, and I, I miss her dearly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd, I'd like.
I would, just before you do that, Mr. Buckles, um, I, I talked to the superintendent today and Mr. Bowling, and, um, just because the, the schools are listed in phase two and phase three, they're, they're not in a specific order, and I think that's really important for people to understand to not think that because your school is listed, the first one in phase two, that that would be the first school that would be built. And then, so then you look at the last school that's listed in phase three, and you think this isn't gonna happen for quite a while. So I do, I, I was told, and I believe it, that it, it's based on need. They would like to build the high schools first. But I'm assuming if there's a school in need, then that's the school that would, we would go to. Okay?
And for the record, I, I, I do understand, Mrs. Superintendent, your group, the committee that, that did the work, we, you have to start somewhere, but I keep hearing the voice that said, just slow down a minute. I also heard David, and hear David, and hear David, but, um, I just, I just, you know.
Can I, can I address that for one minute? I think Mr. Buckles made a comment about it.
Yes, sir.
And, and many of you in education know that, uh, right now, principals are getting ready for next year, okay? I mean, that, the, the clock is running, and I told my staff last week, depending on how this vote goes today, if it's, if it votes, if you vote in favor of the plan, my, my directions to them are, starting tomorrow, we're gonna hit the ground running, and we have a, a timeline set aside that we have to get ready for next year. And this is a tremendous undertaking to do. But the first, some of the first things we're gonna do, and, and I'll talk about it in my comments in just a minute, but, uh, we've got to get our, our principal's name as, in March, as soon as possible. People need to know who's gonna be running these schools. Teach, we have a process set up where teachers will have an opportunity to voice where they wanna go or put their name on the transfer list. We'll have to work out the logistics of moving, um, there's a number of things that we have to do. It's tough enough in a regular year, but this year is gonna be.
Terrible.
It's gonna be a challenge is what I'm saying. So that is why this is on this day. And, you know, we're not trying to rush something and, and leave something aside. We have carefully scheduled and looked at all this. And like I said, starting tomorrow, if this is approved, we have things in place that we need to do to get ready for next year. It's gonna be a big undertaking.
And this, this final phase you were talking about, Sandy, it may even change as, as we go into the process because like with Melrose and like some of the morphing they've already looked at at Jenkins, uh, what superintendent was talking about. What have we got, a tornado warning?
Amber alert.
Amber alert. Uh, it's, it's still subject to, I mean, the state or the federal government may come in here and give us some money. I, I still think what I said to Ms. Key would be very beneficial, maybe make an appointment with Kat Kamak and maybe Bobby Payne to, to try to see if there's any way to find a way to get and preserve history. And, you know, unlike what we hear from some things across the nation where people are trying to erase history, I wanna save it. Black and white in Putnam County, and green and blue, it doesn't matter to me. It, it all needs to be saved like Leo coming here today trying to hold on to his history he was, that we all need to remember. So I'm sure, sure the superintendent will address that in his speech. But I'm ready to make a motion if Madam Chairman's through, if, if you approve.
Uh, Mr. McGinnis.
Question, I guess with the attorney. If I do have, uh, what I've shared with you about my concern, how do I need to approach this? If I'm for the proposal to a degree with an exception to, what do, what should I do?
You can use this opportunity to articulate.
I can't hear Bud.
I'm sorry.
I just gonna say you can, um, use this time to articulate your concerns with the proposal, with the board members, or you can make a motion in whichever way you would like to make a motion.
Don't we need to vote on this motion first?
I would think, but that's up to Ms., Ms., the chair, the president, uh, chairman of the board.
I'm not quite understanding what Mr. McGinnis is saying.
If it doesn't pass, the, the vote, the.
Regarding the safety, he mentioned, uh, in the letter he gave us regarding the children, uh, the, the.
Oh, yes.
The place that serves the transit. I can't hear any of y'all.
Bud, if you wanna make a proposal, that's fine, I mean, because the, I don't think you're, I mean, I, go ahead.
But are we really in, well, I guess we can be based on the decision as to the school itself, but as far as that other thing, that sounds like something the city, Interlaken itself would have. I don't know, I mean, I'm not in law, I'm just trying to.
I'm just doing.
I don't know how to word.
My heart and in my mind.
I would think as we go through this process, the superintendent and his designated staff will have all types of relationships and offers to join in, in joint partnerships. You know, I, I've kinda been, uh, happy at times when county officials join with us and we build sidewalks or do things together to mutually benefit the community, and, and then I get a little aggravated when they oppose something we're trying to do. So, you know, it, I just think.
I'm sorry, are you talking about what you came to us about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's something, I understand what he's talking about now, that's something that's gonna have to be, um.
How can we, how can I make a, a motion then with that understanding that we were definitely followed through some way? I'm, I don't wanna have it like across the board that, yes, yes, yes.
Well, again, this is something that we, we have no jurisdiction over that entity, but we can certainly, and I've already been investigating, um, you know, possible alternate sites.
Yes, sir.
And all that, but I still think we're, we're talking about, uh, negotiating with another separate governmental entity on how to resolve this problem. And I'm committed to doing that, but I'm saying.
Okay.
I can't guarantee that's gonna happen based on, we have, we have no control over that entity.
I mean, I guess, Mr. Attorney, we can discuss what he's talking about between the, Bud, what are you talking about? Which town, which city, which entity?
Talking about Interlaken.
The letter he gave us.
When, uh, we look down ten years, the third in phase three, we're discussing moving Price Middle School to the high school, and then they will do a new site for I E S, which is in a proximity of a concern that I have as a resident and a school board member. It's a safety concern.
A new site for I, I E S?
Would be at the C H Price school site eventually. That's where we're going to put I E S.
Look at your point.
You wanna talk, just talk about straight up what, who you're talking about?
Okay. How's the time to do that?
I'm gonna, I'll just identify, I, I was a critic when I ran for the school board, but it's, uh, just been brought to my attention. The schools, the, uh, Interlaken Soup Kitchen was open in March, and, um, I had some concerns about it. I, I approached the town of Interlaken and, um, I just feel there's been no accountability for the safety of our schoolchildren in that area. If we are putting a, an elementary school two hundred twenty-eight feet within a site that there's no jurisdiction, no, um, police that's, you know, watching it or maintaining it, it's just been a concern of mine from day one. I, I let it rest, but now it's been drawn up again. But we're gonna have K through, pre-K through, pre-K through six across the street from an operation that's opens more than they state that they do. They do a great job of what their mission is, but town of Interlaken, in my opinion, um, you know, they had to have a special exception for the soup kitchen there now, and, uh, probably this, we need to look at the special exception, or someone does, for the safety of our children should announce prevention as a pound, worth a pound of cure.
Could we possibly hire police officers or deputy, uh, school resource officers at the, the start and the end of school to?
Why is that our responsibility?
I, I, I see that being a given, that we would ensure the safety of our children, uh, on any circumstances, even with the soup kitchen being where it is. I mean, I didn't realize that they were posing a danger, but I, 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 I understand that that could be a concern. But I think we need to go ahead and get started. A bad start is better than, than no start. I mean, the superintendent has to notify staff and people and, and, and start transferring teachers, and it's, this is bigger than it, than it looks like. And I just, I, I think, Bud, your point is well-taken, but I, I think that's something that we'll just have to work mutually with, and I think we can do it. And I, and I, I absolutely understand where you're coming from because we know what is lurking in, in the outlying areas and all through every county in the state of Florida and every.
All the states, everywhere.
Everywhere.
Just wanted that to be brought to your concern.
Thank you.
To your attention.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the revitalization of facilities plan and let the superintendent start moving on with, and, and with the understanding that if he finds a way to, 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 uh, discover unique opportunities to house history or things that we find. to house history or things that we find along the way, that he's able to bring that to us and minimize the negative impact on the, all the communities that we're impacting, but we've got to find a way to best serve the needs of our children and do it in an economic fashion that we don't go broke in the district.
Did you make a motion, Mr. Buckles?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'd like to second that.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion by Mr. David Buckles to accept item F two, and we had a second by Ms. Jane Crawford. Is there any discussion? Okay, should we do a roll call vote, or...
It does not have to be roll call, you can choose to have it roll call.
Do it. Go ahead and do a roll call.
All right, District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yay.
District Three?
No.
District Four?
No.
District Five?
Yes.
Okay, we have, um, motion carries three, two. Moving on to new business, uh, the resolution for granting emergency powers to the superintendent.
Madam Chair, I, I hate to have a, feel like I'm dominating making motions, but we are still in this problem where schools in America aren't even open yet, and we're running wide open, and we've got a superintendent that can't be hamstrung with having to call us before he makes some important life and death decisions, so I'll let one of you guys make the, the motion.
Oh, you've made a second.
All right.
Okay, Mr., we have a motion by Mr. Buckle, David Buckles, and a second by Ms. Sandy Gillyard to accept and grant the emergency powers to the superintendent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five, zero. Reports by the board members and the board attorney and the superintendent. Ms. Gillyard, would you like to start?
Okay, just want to again congratulate the young man, the winner from Miller for the spelling bee, and certainly the young man here, just a fifth grader from Melrose for representing Putnam County. We, we're pleased. Also want to just, uh, thank all of those that have come and shared your, your voice, your opinions, allowing you to know that, that, yes, we, we, we hear you, that is our, our job. We, we are trying to do everything within our power to ensure that we make decisions that we hope are in the best interest of, of our constituents, of our students, and we have a team of, the leadership team down here that, that does an excellent job with programs and things of that nature. But I want to acknowledge all employees. I've been following the states, uh, that, some of the northern states, that schools have not even opened, and we look at all that, that our staff have weathered and, and put up with and, and been concerned about, came and shared their opinions, their fear of the unseen enemy, the pandemic. But they, they said if we were willing to support them, they got in there, they gave it their best, and we, we acknowledged our employees from every school, school-related employees, teachers from every school, our maintenance department, our drivers, our cafeteria workers, our paraprofessionals, all of those people that make our schools run, our custodian staff. We thank you, because a lot of states and school districts cannot say this, and we are blessed and thank you.
I can't, I can't build on what Sandy said, I think she's right on target. My heart goes out to the folks that are here for Jenkins, because, I mean, I, I grew up watching a school be built up the hill there, that, where Celo is, and I attended that in high school, and most of my friends that I played football with came from Central Academy when, you know, when integration started, and there is a lot of history, and I had many discussions with Abe Alexander about this years ago, and Ernest Clayton, that, that stuff's got to be somewhere, some of that material, we, we need to look for it, and we need to try to find a way to salvage it. And beyond that, I'll be happy to talk to Kat Kamak with any of you guys and see if there's anything we can do and maybe solicit, uh, Mr. Pickens, uh, from the college and some of his. He, he had a lot to do with trying to get a grant years ago, and maybe he can have some input with some people as well, so just let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Ms. Crawford?
Um, I've been in Rochester, New York since the last board meeting, awaiting the birth of my grandson, who was born this morning, early in the morning during the worst snowstorm in the last five years here in Rochester. I just would like to say thank you to everyone who has had input, all of our, um, public comments, all of our school board members, all of our leadership team, everyone who has been involved, and I, I just think this is going to be a wonderful thing for Putnam County in many, many ways. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, I'd like to also congratulate Armin and Connor. It was a great experience to be a judge, and I won't ever forget Connor, when he got the word newbie, he looked right at me, and I don't know what that meant, but it must have been written in my head. Huh?
Which word?
Newbie.
Newbie.
Okay.
Newbie.
You're an oldie.
And I'm glad that the proposal passed, I really, I am glad. I just have some concerns that y'all know I'm very concerned about, and...
Those are valid concerns.
We're going to move on with that. I'm really pleased with the way everyone has, uh, the way the district has pulled in. This Mellon idea is great, I just see it as a win-win for E.H. Miller students and a lot of the people that addressed me particularly about their concerns about the challenges of moving those students, just the whole transition, like Dr. Searcy said, this plan is just going to streamline the, minimize all the transitions. If you can think about what these children, and our teachers and parents as well, have gone through over the last eighteen months, this is just going to be huge, and I know y'all get the same kind of reports we get from Nefar, but, I mean, we really have to be prepared. People don't, this is a secret, forever and a day, when I worked in Latju County, I was always defending Putnam County, and now, I mean, people are looking here a lot, so just go on with it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. I just want to say thank you to every employee, just like Ms. Gillyard did. And like I said before, I, I commend the district leadership and the superintendent for having the vision and the, the forethought to even get us to this point. I appreciate their humility and their flexibility, and I'm sure that it will continue, and I agree. I, I think this is a very big positive for Putnam County schools. So, if you're not doing anything tomorrow night at seven, the Crescent City Boys Soccer is playing in the regional quarterfinals after their comeback victory to become the district champs. So, seven o'clock at Wiltshire Stadium, be there, it'll be fun. And I'm excited about the beginning of softball and baseball season, and I really appreciate the fact that we can have sports for our children. I've seen some pretty terrible stories about students that were not allowed to participate in their sports, and so I'm very grateful for that. And that's, I do have a concern about Middleton Bernie, and I'll always advocate for my end of the county and for all our students. So, with that, Mr. Douglas?
Nothing further reports on the legal department.
Thank you, and Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, on a very positive note, as you know, this isn't positive, but Ms. Corman is retiring, as you know, at the end of this year, and we have actually hired her replacement, who is actually going to be working with her starting in March through the end of the year, and that is Susan Michael. So, I want, y'all are going to be getting to know Susan pretty well, Susan, wave at him if you would.
Please introduce the person.
Susan comes to us by way of Interlock and High School, and she will be sorely missed there, but this is a great opportunity for her and for us especially, so I know y'all will get to know her very well, and just ask that you make a point to speak to her as soon as you can.
Yeah, she came around and met Mrs. Corman.
Very good, very good. I do want to announce, because of this vote today, we have extended the deadline for acceleration applications until February twenty-sixth. So, I just want to make sure, I've said that on the radio today, but I don't want to say it here in public, that if you did not get your application in for Cambridge or for the Collegiate High School, that deadline's been extended to the twenty-sixth, and you can go to our website to get more information on that. I do want, Bud, I want you to make note of this on your calendar, on March twenty-second, uh, at one thirty, I'm going to ask that you be here for a workshop or a hearing, actually, we'll call it a school board hearing for public comment on the recommended instructional materials.
That was the twenty-sixth?
Ma'am?
March twenty...
March twenty-second at one thirty P.M. And I'll ask Ms. Corman or Ms. Michael to email you that information as well. Immediately after that hearing, which will be a very brief hearing, at two P.M. on the same day, March twenty-second, like to have a workshop on our strategic plan. And I think Mr. Hinky referenced that earlier, so we're going to provide you additional information at that time. Because we, we would like to finish up our work on the strategic plan by May of this year, so we have a lot of things we need to do before then. To answer Mr. Granger, who came up earlier and talked about the naming of schools, let me read something, just to make this very clear about our, our concern about the names of schools. Effective immediately, Mr. Bowling has, has been named, I've named Mr. Bowling to form a committee, a naming committee, for Interlock and High School slash CH Price Middle School. As you know, as part of this plan, starting next year, both of them will become one school. So, we, we want to address the name of that school, and the committee will provide us, um, input on that. Mellon Elementary School Campus, which will now be occupied by students from E.H. Miller, and will have pre-K students from the central area. So, again, we just want them to entertain the naming of that school. If, you know, I'm not saying it's going to change, but we want them to consider that. It will not be necessary to rename any other facilities at this time. As per our past practice, we are not changing the configurations of the campus significantly. For example, Crescent City High School could once again be called Crescent City Junior/Senior High School, okay? Same thing at Palaka High School, Junior/Senior High School. Uh, I think with Interlock and that's, Interlock and High School, that's different, because we have another facility with a name on there, so that presents a different situation. And anyone interested who want to participate on a naming committee should contact one of you, one of you, or they can reach out to Mr. Bowling directly, and he'll be getting that information from you, and we'll be forming that committee as quickly as possible, okay? So, I just want to make sure Mr. Granger brought that up, but I, but I wanted to address that today. And we are very, the naming of schools, you know, they were named with, uh, you know, for a reason, so we want to go back and reconsider that and definitely pay homage to those people who have contributed to our school district. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Anybody have anything else? Being none, this meeting's adjourned.